We'll call our meeting to order. As you see, we have some reception items set up and backed. Tonight was our opportunity to celebrate our PTO presidents and vice presidents, technically our co-counsel, and bring all of our PTOs together so they have an opportunity to meet each other if they have not, as well as meet various members of the board, as well as Dr. Wall, our superintendent, and our other administrators who are able to join us. As a board, we do recognize and really appreciate the work our PTOs do for each of our students. They are able to offer extracurricular activities and really enhance what we can do as a school system, so we appreciate all of your work. And with that, we will move into our roll call.
All board members except for Mrs. Niles are present this evening.
Wonderful. Next, if you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Hackett is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight, we are very fortunate to be able to celebrate a number of teachers, as well as students, for some very exciting academic achievements. And for our presentations, Dr. Wall is going to lead.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mrs. Kay Vasquez to the podium, as she will be recognizing the 2016 Indiana Outstanding High School Student of Spanish Award. Please come forward.
So, ever since you can come and join me now, that's fine. There's my girl. Ever since Cecilia was a freshman, her Spanish teachers at CHF have been amazed at her abilities, not just me. I was so fortunate to have had her in Level Four Spanish last year, and her contributions in working class far surpassed most other students. In addition, she is one of the kindest and most humble people I know. One of my goals as a teacher is to always keep students motivated and wanting more. I want all my students to study abroad, as I know it is life-changing. I shared the information about IU Honors, a study abroad program that other Carmel students have participated in throughout the years. Cecilia applied and was accepted. She was excited, but very nervous, but I knew she was prepared, and she was really ready for this experience. And she excelled for six weeks, six and a half weeks, in León, Spain. Other professors from IU, from this program, and this, yeah, and this program, were very impressed by her, and because of this, she was chosen by the Indiana Chapter of American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese as a 2016 Indiana Outstanding High School Student of Spanish. She will be honored at our conference in November. Congratulations, and you are so deserving. It was an honor to have had you as my student.
Thank you very much. All right, and then where?
Do you want to say a few words?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you to all sorts of people. Thank you to the board for having me at this meeting and recognizing me for this award. Thank you very much to Mrs. Vasquez, not only for being my Spanish teacher, but for encouraging me to participate in the program. And I know that they're not exactly here, but I'd like to also say thank you to Isra, the professor that nominated me for this award, and all of the Indian Chapter of the Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese, something like that. And of course, thank you to my parents for supporting me in everything I do and making my study abroad trip possible. Thank you all.
Sticking with that theme, I'd like to introduce and bring forward Mrs. Andrea Yocum. She'll be recognizing the 2016 Exceptional Teaching Impact and Motivation Student Voice Award for Outstanding Spanish Teacher.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor and my pleasure tonight to award Mrs. Kay Vasquez with our esteemed teacher award. I was thinking a lot about what I wanted to say about Mrs. Vasquez, and what it really came down to is that Kay Vasquez always does what is right for the students, always. She is a wonderful teacher. I've known her now for 10 years and have had the honor and the pleasure and the privilege to work with her. And she is one of the most influential teachers in my own career, so I am so humbled to present this award for her. I think some of the things that stand out about her, the attributes, Kay always teaches with a sense of humor, and it's something that I think is so important when teaching and when reaching our young people. The authenticity that she brings to the classroom is absolutely amazing in this day and age. The authenticity that she brings in with her stories about living in Germany with her family, in traveling with her family, all of the multiculturalism that she brings to the classroom is fantastic. Above all, though, is the passion that she brings for teaching. She is absolutely a joy to work with and an inspiration, so congratulations from all of us.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Congratulations. Would you like to say?
No. Just thanks, and I love what I do. I am nervous.
Thank you. We have a very special spotlight on excellence this evening. I'd like to bring Ms. Sue Mackey forward from the City of Carmel. Sue, we had some of our students be recognized for the President's Environmental Youth Award, and Sue will tell about that trip to Washington, D.C., and the project that the students are doing.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. My name is Sue Mackey, and I work for the City of Carmel Utilities. And may I have the Carmel Green Teens come up here and join me? The Carmel Green Teen Micro Grant Program is a youth-directed program that is sponsored by the City of Carmel Utilities. The Carmel Green Teens awards small grants and provides mentorships to young people for their youth-led sustainability projects in Carmel. Fifty-one environmental projects have received funding since the program was founded in 2009. In recognition of the outstanding work of the Carmel Green Teen Micro Grant Program, the Environmental Protection Agency awarded the Green Teens the Presidential Environmental Youth Award for EPA Region Five. Youth members of the Carmel Green Teens were invited to the White House for the award ceremony. The ceremony took place on August 16th, where the Green Teens were recognized for their achievements and presented with their individual plaques. These Carmel High School students have worked hard during their middle and high school years in making Carmel a greener place, one youth project at a time. And I would like to recognize the five Green Teens that are part of Carmel Clay Schools: Shiva Valabahan Bananee. I knew I'd do that, I am so sorry. Shiva Valabahan Bananee.
No, yeah.
Sitha Valabananee. I am sorry, that is all my fault. Erin Varnow.
Thank you.
Lacy Ammon Di Polly.
Thank you.
And Eden Sidlowski. These have been, are great kids to work with, and they have done a lot of work.
Okay, hold right there. All the board recipients, come back up, because the board hasn't had a chance to shake your hand. They didn't go through, right?
No.
Okay. All of them, come on up. And then when you're done, by group, Courtney, get away, Courtney. She'll get your photo over. Okay, so if you go through there, the board will recognize you as one of these. Thank you. Thank you.
Very fun. I picture, um, the current event, so, all right, so. Yes, of course. Yeah, we'll do the individual one, and, yeah. Yep. A P S P, and I'm sorry, I'm late. That's the Indiana Chapter of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese. I just got the notice at 6:30, and I'm here, guys. But we're just so proud of this young lady, and that's why I did a special effort, and it's been a laid hour to be here. Who are you able to talk about?
And you want to say a few words?
Cam, did you want to speak a little bit?
Do you want to say a few words?
I just want to let you all know. It's not about me, it's about her.
She spoke.
It's so nice to know you.
Nice to meet you. You stand right there.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the Indiana, or as the American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese, Indiana Chapter, I'm just so very, very proud of this young lady and all of her accomplishments. And our whole Board of Directors and all of the teachers that are a part of that organization know what this means. And for any school to have a student that is so outstanding, we really are so happy that you are recognizing them and the teachers' efforts to move along and help our youngsters to progress and really become global citizens. That's what this is about. Her level of proficiency in the language, and that means being able to function in the language, is rising higher and higher. And these are the aims of the State of Indiana and of our chapter, which, by the way, I get a chance to brag, because we were elected the best chapter in the nation this year. So, part of that has come about because we are recognizing the achievements of our teachers and our students. So, we're just so proud of you, and that's what this is about. And that's why everybody's here, correct?
That's right.
So, your successes are our successes. The best to you, love.
Thank you very much.
Arriba y adelante.
Thanks for being here.
Oh, thank you so very much. My pleasure. Are you in your course?
We will pause momentarily for those students who might want to head out with their families to study, to be even stronger students. That'd be fabulous. Well, moving right along, then, we have seen that we do not have anybody wishing to speak for public participation. We'll move straight into consent. Make it a motion on the table to approve consent.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we'll suspend a regular board meeting and open a public hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed 2017 budgets, the three-year capital projects fund plan, as well as the 12-year bus replacement plan. As you recall, on August 22nd, Mr. McMichael presented the proposed 2017 budgets, the three-year capital projects plan fund, as well as the 12-year bus replacement plan. Notice of the public hearing were placed in the current Carmel and the State of Indiana Gateway website. Mr. McMichael would like, or Ms. Hackett, would you like to make any comments?
Now, just that this is the opportunity for public comment, and as you said, we advertise to the public, and this would be opportunity for any comments that they may want to make.
Okay, so at this time, we will offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these budgets and plans. And seeing that there is nobody wishing to speak, we are going to close our hearing. Thank you. Then, moving right along. Let me pull up here. Our first action item is the additional appropriation from the 2016 General Fund and Referendum Fund. I need to get in motion. Well, wait a minute. Sorry, I've kind of confused myself here. Mr. McMichael, would you like to speak to this proposal?
Yes, we're requesting an additional appropriation in our general fund, as well as our referendum fund. These budgets were put together a year ago in the summer, so since then, there have been a number of things that have changed. One thing that happened is, is that we did not, we gave our teachers their retroactive salary increase, but that was not done until end of this year's budget, 2016. It was done sometime after January, February, I believe. So, and in addition to that, we also, the state was delayed in sending the grant for the performance grant that we receive each year. And so that was also paid in early 2016. As a result of that, normally, we would get that money in November, and so, and we expect to get this year's funds in November, and so, which means that in 2016, we will have paid two years of performance grant. So, those things primarily result in the need for this additional appropriation. Now, the additional appropriation, we have, it has no impact on taxes, it's just, and we have the funds, but we don't, the appropriation allows us to spend the funds. And so that's the purpose of this process and the need for it.
And so what you're requesting is basically approval from the board to advertise for a hearing with regards to the appropriations.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Make it a motion on the table to approve authorizing the administration to advertise a public hearing for October 24th, 2016, regarding the appropriation, the additional appropriations. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mike?
Yes, so, I mean, my only question is, so, it's broken out into the three different funds, but it's all for those same, it's just based upon where the teachers are, if they're regular, special, or support staff?
Yes, we're seeking appropriation in both the general fund and the referendum fund, as you know. Both funds are used for operational purposes. We really, we have to track them separately and keep the funding separate, but both funds are used for the same purpose.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Next, we have the adoption of the Carmel Clay 2017 Legislative Priorities, and for that, we're turning to Mrs. Hackett.
There. As you know, we began this process of adopting our legislative priorities August, at our August 4th workshop, by aligning the ISBA's proposed legislative priorities and foundational statements, along with what we perceive to be needs in the Carmel Clay area, in our district. And we, while developing these legislative priorities, we emphasize students being at the center of every decision, state funding, local control, and transparency. Just this morning, a lot of us were at a conference, and at the delegate session, the ISBA proposed legislative priorities were adopted. So that's why we're doing this timing to adopt ours. We always try to, since we align ours with the ISBA's legislative priorities, we want to make sure they do really adopt their, or that we, as the ISBA representatives, do adopt theirs before we adopt ours. So that's why the timing is such. But just kind of to go over, since the 2017 budget is a long session, a budget session, with our legislators, which will begin in January, we emphasized funding with our legislative priorities. As you can see, I can't fit it up all at one time, but our first one is funding with discussion points. And we, I'm not going to go over every point, because we've done this in the past on our public session, but we chose to, as ISBA did, to emphasize specific needs instead of kind of a general call for more revenue, even though, and I want to say that you might recall that the basic grant for funding from the state is currently at about 2008, 2010 levels. So there is a hole, so to speak, in every district's budget across the state. Our second priority has to do with referendum. That is near and dear to our hearts right now, a very hot topic for us, both because of the hole I just mentioned, and then you add in the complexity index. We use our referendum, for the most part, to fill that double hole and get us up to about an average per pupil spending of what it is average across the state. And our referendum is up for renewal or re-upped, to be voted on by our community this spring. So this is a topic that's very pertinent to us right now. So we put that second, especially because it's funding-related. And that takes us down to our third and final legislative priority, student testing. Obviously, that's a hot topic right now. You read it in the papers, and it is a very student-centered issue. We will definitely give this priority in due diligence, too. ESSA still mandates that a summative test be at least part of the accountability testing that needs to be done. And the 23-member panel that our Indiana Legislature has formed to look at testing and issues related to testing, and the replacement of ISEPT, variety of things there, they appear to be somewhat deadlocked right now, so I'm not sure what advice they'll be able to give handoff to our legislators, which puts us in a position to be a little bit more pertinent in that conversation, let's say. It'd be nice if we could have been along with the 23-member, just there's a lot of different opinions on there. So hopefully, we can help provide some guidance to our legislators on that. Our legislative priorities, along with what ISBA is on their legislative priorities, promotes a shorter summative test, and also de-emphasizing or limiting student testing scores as part of a teacher's evaluation. From Nick's and my conversation that we have with legislators last year, leaders in the government, and Nick's also had some at the national level, really, it seems to be, we all seem to share the interest, no matter what party you're from, or if you're strictly, you know, in a school district representative type of position, we share this need and desire to get our hands around this testing issue, shorten it, make it more pertinent, make it more usable by our teachers. The details are different, but the main, the main emphasis there is shared by a lot of people, across party lines. Finally, if adopted, I suggest we use a similar process to in the last few years. We'll email out the basic copy. I've shown you the copy just now with all the legislate, with all the discussion points. But I think what we'll mail out, we'll email out to all of our legislators and certain key leaders, is this basic format, where it just is a one-page, hits the nitty-gritty right there. And then we'll also include a request to meet with our local representatives, the chairs of both education committees, the Speaker of the House and Senator Pro Tem, the Governor and the State Superintendent of Public Education. And even though ESSA has passed, we could, again, send these requests to our legislators at a national level, you know, ask the board member if they're interested in doing that. It was, we did that for the first time last year, and it was timely with ESSA, and Nick has actually made some really good inroads with some of those organizations, so I feel we're in a good place to have heart in that conversation. And then, different in years past, I think what we'll do is, Nick and I found last year that it worked really well to use this, you know, to use the paper with our legislative priorities as our talking points, kind of as our guide as we went through the discussion. But I would like to propose we do this year, is when we go there, that we actually, part of our handouts we give them, is the one with the talking points. And that way, we don't have to rely so much on them taking notes and remembering, but that they've, I don't know, earned the right to see, and then we can explain, obviously, the talking points. So I thought that might be a neat way to progress in that area. And then always go up on our website, so you can always, anybody out in the public can see them up on our website under the School Board tab. So with that, I would like to move to adopt the Carmel Clay Schools 2017 Legislative Priorities as presented.
And second? She moved.
Or I did move?
Oh, I guess she did.
Tricia moved.
I moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I know we've gone over these multiple times, so I just have a couple of, I mean, quick typos that I just like to add before we actually vote. At the end of 2B, the citation to the Indiana Code 20-46-1-14-B, I think that whole section, that whole statute, section of the statute is relevant, and that we can drop the B from that. And then my second point is just in item 2C, we just need a parent, the end parentheses after the code reference.
And if I could say something? Mike emailed those suggestions. I don't think there's some substantive, but easy tweaks, which also reminded me of something else I didn't say. Actually, the main difference between the draft that we were last showed in public and this one is, we actually broke up B and C here under the referendum under two, and made it into two different ones, because they kind of hit on different topics. So I personally think those adjustments that Mike suggested are obviously good.
I would agree. Mike's comment actually goes to your statement that we should include the talking points with our legislators, and I think that's a fabulous idea, because not only will they have less to write down, but then they will have specific language to reproduce when they're having these discussions with their constituents and with their fellow legislators. I think you really did a nice job pulling all this together, and I appreciate all your work. It was a lot of work. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Well, then, well, we have to approve, I'm only, I'm looking at the B, and I do not find that to be substantive, that we need to motion to amend these. Would you agree? Okay. Then all in favor of supporting the 2017 Legislative Priorities for Carmel Clay Schools, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along, we have discussion, and for both of our discussion items, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening, the first part I bring to you is the 2017-18 course changes at Carmel High School for the Program of Studies. We do have a few new courses that we're presenting, two of them in social studies and history for independent study for our students, a couple courses in family and consumer science, some changes, one's a modification, and one is actually a delete of course, a change, or correspondence in business, and then also world language and art.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Discussion? Anybody have questions, comments? Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. Next, moving right on.
And then the second discussion item I have is a waiver that we would like to submit once it's approved by the board to the state. And this is for, we currently offer Sports Medicine I and Sports Medicine II. However, in Sports Medicine II, the students are not eligible right now to receive a credit for that course, and by submitting this waiver to the state and getting the state's approval, our students would then be able to get a one credit to continue on with Sports Medicine II.
Amy, do they currently get credit because we have a previous waiver, or is this completely new?
This is a new waiver.
Okay.
This is the initial request.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Wonderful. Then we will have these back in October for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our financial update. Mr. McMichael?
we've ended August with just over $9.4, which is about where we would expect to be this time of year. You can see from the report that because our referendum, our funding for the general fund comes from the state...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Wonderful. Then we will have these back in October for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our financial update. Mr. McMichael.
We started August with just over $9.2 million of cash balance or operating balance, and we've ended August with just over $9.4, which is about where we would expect to be this time of year. You can see from the report that because our referendum, our funding for the general fund comes from the state monthly, and so that somewhat tracks with our expenses, but the referendum funding coming from property taxes comes in primarily in May and June, and then November and December. So, you can see that our balance drops as we go through the year until we receive those local tax draws, and then it will go back up, and the same thing will happen the second six months. And while you can see the percentage to the far right, that looks about right, just based on this time of the year, except for the fact that, as discussed earlier with the additional appropriation, we will be paying out a performance bonus, somewhere over $1 million in November, or in December, probably, we'll pay it, and thus, the need for that additional appropriation, which will show up in the next report.
Kathy?
Would you clarify for our audience exactly what the performance payment is for, the bonus?
Yes, we receive funds from the state specifically to pay what's described as cash awards for teachers, and it is provided for all teachers that are rated effective or highly effective.
If I need to question? Thank you very much, Roger.
Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to give the board an update. Our preliminary ADM, Average Daily Membership, for this current year is 15,941, which is up 87 students from last year, which is just a slightly higher increase than the demographer anticipated, but very close. I also want to remind the board that we have not done a demographic study in three years, and with our school corporation, school district of our size and potential for growth, and with the number of vertical structures, multiple-level vertical structures going into our boundaries, we are projected to take, have a demographer come in this fall. And what that will do for us is reaffirm our redistricting plan that we did a couple years ago, and we'll also reaffirm the attendance projected going forward, but definitely, there's been enough movement that we should have another demographic study for Carmel Clay Schools. That will be reported then to the board as soon as we get it completed, as another important tool in our strategic plan to make decisions going forward, because with our vision, strategic plan, it's to look forward and anticipate what's coming down the road, and demographic study is a very important tool for us to help with those predictions.
Well, thank you. We also have an opportunity for board members to give any kind of report that they would like to share. Any reports?
I just would like to thank the community and the school system for supporting our professional development, as we are attending the two-day ISBA conference that was held down in the Convention Center today and tomorrow. And we receive a lot of really good information that helps us move forward on our strategic plan.
Thank you, Kathy. And I know Tricia was instrumental in sitting in on a number of meetings this morning about legislative priorities, serving as our legislative delegate to ISBA, so Mike was able to, and Mike was able to stop in and visit, and he'll be there tomorrow. So, it was really a great day, including Dr. Roth, thank you for joining and learning as well.
Absolutely.
With that, and the presidential debate, circus debate coming up soon, we are going to adjourn our meeting.